Good afternoon, everyone. This is a fantastic opportunity to speak to reclaim rent control and any of the other community organizations that are involved with with trying to make sure that all citizens in the District of Columbia have affordable housing. My name is Marlena Edwards and I'm running for Ward 4 City Council. I'm a passionate community activist committed to social justice. I have devoted over 23 years of service to residents throughout the District of Columbia, helping families to navigate the public social service system. And I've been on numerous boards and committees that promote coalition building amongst district and national professionals. And I have met regularly with mayors, with city council members, with executive directors on the local and national levels related to healthcare, socioeconomic development, and legislative policy. Therefore, I'm the best qualified candidate to be Ward 4 City Council and the best candidate to continue providing solutions for all residents in the District of Columbia. I have been with multiple Ward 4 organizations. I won the D.C. Democratic State Committee Ward 4 Representative Vote by 7,143 votes, the highest in the history of the position, and have served on numerous other citywide boards. So I thank you so much for this opportunity.
Great, thanks. Sorry, I know the intro was short. So we're going to go ahead and start with the questions. The first question is, approximately 90,000 families live in apartments that are under D.C.'s rent control program, which is currently up for reauthorization. The D.C. Council's temporary universal ban on all rent increases exposes the need for tenant protections. What changes, if any, would you make to D.C.'s rent control laws?
Well, based on our, specifically with our COVID-19 situation that we have here, the pandemic, renters need protection with coverage of rent and those who are homeowners with mortgages. First with a deference, and then we need to look to see if the government would be able to provide a federal package to mortgage companies in order to do what will be the equivalent of a previous bailout in order to assist tenants at this time.
So, D.C. Council has enacted legislation that prohibits rent increases during the state of emergency and prohibits evictions until 30 days after the public health crisis has ended. We know that nationally about a third of residents, of tenants, could not pay their rent on April 1st. Given that over 87,000 D.C. workers filed for unemployment in the last month, that statistic may be higher in the district. While the courts in D.C. are close to the public, until recently landlords continued to file eviction cases online in order to push through evictions as soon as possible. As the crisis continues, tenants will continue to fall behind on their rent and accrue debt. What would you do to address this issue if you were on the council now?
Well, it is excellent that at this time, the city council has already said that late charges cannot be charged. At this time, there should be a moratorium on any evictions for at least the next 90 days. We would encourage landlords to work with their tenants in order to see if they can obtain partial payment at this time. But for the next three months, I would push through legislation for moratorium on the filing and/or evictions.
Thank you. The D.C. Housing Authority states that the 6,600-plus units of public housing need up to $2.5 billion in deferred maintenance and capital improvements. And the agency has charted a 20-year redevelopment plan. What would you like to see happen in public housing and what would you do?
I have worked extensively with individuals who may have been homeless or individuals who needed affordable housing or subsidized housing. And I would help them through the process of actually obtaining affordable units. What I would do at this time is look at any empty school buildings that you have in the District of Columbia and using that to expand housing or improved housing in order to move individuals over to what may be better than where they are. Because if they are somewhere where there's deferred maintenance, there may be a chance that there are extensive issues in the entire building. Therefore, looking at new strategies to move them into new apartments. Let's say if you have a brand-new building, that if you have a brand-new building, if you have a minimum of 25% accepting housing vouchers and/or sliding scale rent, then moving individuals over to newer buildings, since 20 years is much too long to look at capital improvements. That doesn't work at all.
Encampment clearings to the threat of COVID outbreaks and shelters. We know that D.C.'s homeless services programs are not working for many residents. How would you ensure that all D.C. residents have safe, quality, and affordable housing?
Well, at this time, the District of Columbia needs to look at opening up facilities such as the former St. Elizabeth's campus. There are empty housing units that are just sitting there that are district-owned, that are closed down, that should be opened up in this emergency situation. I did not agree with the clearing of encampments. That was prior to COVID. I thought that was wrong to displace people. And there should be a push to set up more affordable housing as well. I've been on the board of Emerald Beacon of Light that created an affordable housing complex with 90 units right here in Ward 4, and it has a transitional housing component. And you must earn under $60,000 a year to live. They're not over. So if we have, work with organizations such as Emerald Beacon of Light, we can help to expand housing and then look at other buildings such as over the St. Elizabeth's campus to open that back up during this COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you. So this is the one-minute question. We talked about D.C.'s affordable housing crisis with respect now to rent control, public housing, and homelessness. What would be your top three priorities related to housing as a council member? You can list them.
My top three priorities related to housing, again, would be the expansion, rapid expansion of housing, because we have the former Walter Reed military base, which is here, and it should have affordable housing options built there. There are plans for rebuilding St. Elizabeth's campus, where there's 100 acres of land there, and building new affordable housing there to make sure that we are adequately taking care of our low and moderate-income residents.
Thank you. The impacts of the coronavirus have also revealed the real lack of a safety net for workers in D.C., particularly undocumented workers and those working in the informal and gig economies. How would you address these issues?
Well, we need to look at California. California has an excellent model where they have opened up the ability for undocumented workers to get a stipend, equivalent of an unemployment benefits check during the COVID-19 crisis. So if we can confirm that we have legitimate residents here in the District of Columbia, it's critical that we include the undocumented workers as well in being able to receive benefits so that they can maintain their households.
So approximately 90,000 families live in apartments that are under D.C.'s rent control program, which is currently up for reauthorization. The D.C. Council's temporary universal ban on all rent increases exposes the need for increased tenant protections. What changes, if any, would you make to D.C.'s rent control laws?
I believe, and particularly in this COVID-19 era, to make sure that renters are protected and that they do not have to pay late fees. I would put in added exemption that their landlords work with them over a next 90-day period so that they can do partial rent payments, if necessary, because of the crisis that we have. And then moving further beyond the specific crisis, just dealing with areas where if you have older, if you have buildings that are built before 2006, making sure that the rent control is adequately applied. We need to give more opportunities for cooperative ownership. And we see that that program is doing very well in Ward 1, where there's cooperative ownership so that people can keep low rent and it can be extended to the next tenant if someone moves from that cooperative. So those are some of the issues in dealing with rent control. And also increasing money that's going into the housing production trust in order to make sure that it is going towards low-income and medium-income housing development. And as I mentioned before, the biggest opportunities to have a mixed type of housing solution would be at the former Walter Reed Army Base and also at the former St. Elizabeth's campus, where there's 100 acres where lots of affordable housing could be developed for singles, for adults, for families, for seniors.
Hi, my name is Janice Lewis George. I am a third-generation Washingtonian, born and raised right here in Ward 4, where I'm running to be council member for the District Ward 4. A little bit, I knew I was going to do that.
Okay, no problem. One more time.
I knew I was going to do that. All right, sorry. Hi, my name is Janice Lewis George. I am a third-generation Washingtonian, born and raised right here in Ward 4, where I'm running for council member. For me, what I've seen growing up here in Ward 4 is that the stories of families have continued to change. We've seen displacement, we've seen families pushed out. Myself personally, the home that I grew up in, the rent went up twice and was going up a third time. And my mom, even with a good union job, couldn't afford for us to stay here any longer. And so I had to help and do two, three jobs to help our family survive here. What I realized going through this is that my story is a story of so many and that if we're going to make a change, we're going to have to change the leadership and the people who make the policies. And so I'm running in this war because I recognize that we need new leadership to make new policies and someone who's going to fight for working people and working families to be able to thrive here. And so if you are a supporter of working families, working people, and believing they need to thrive here, please vote for Janice Lewis George on June 2nd.
All right, thanks. And the next question is, approximately 90,000 families live in apartments that are under D.C.'s rent control program, which is currently up for reauthorization. The D.C. Council's temporary universal ban on all rent increases exposes the need for increased tenant protections. What changes, if any, would you make to D.C. rent control laws? And this will be three minutes. I will put on a timer. Let's see. I'll give you the thumbs up when you're ready to go.
I'm good. It's so important for us to not just do the status quo, which would be at this time to just reauthorize rent control as it is right now. But in this moment, it is so important for us to expand and strengthen rent control. Expanding rent control across the city mitigates the displacement of D.C. residents, which we've seen already happen in our communities. We need to expand rent control to include apartments built before 2005, which have not been updated and are currently sat at buildings built before 1976. By expanding into buildings built before 2005, we will substantially increase the amount of rent control eligible apartments. We need to increase the amount of units, making it so that four-unit buildings also fit within rent control. We have an opportunity in this rent control platform to be able to do that and significantly expand the amount of apartments that fall under rent control. We need to cap rental increases on properties and protect tenants from soldiering the financial burden for capital improvements. We also need to eliminate the rental increases allowed on vacant properties at this time. I'm in full support of the reclaiming rent control platform because it will help continue to make the city more affordable, help D.C. residents and help working families be able to afford to live here in our city and protect them as much as we can against the current tide of displacement and developer-focused policy in our city.
Great, thank you. And the next question. The city council has enacted legislation that prohibits rent increases during the state of emergency and prohibits evictions until 30 days after the public health crisis has been ended. We know that nationally, 1/3 of tenants could not pay their rent on April 1st. Given that over 87,000 D.C. workers have filed for unemployment in the last month, the statistic may be higher in the district. While the courts in D.C. are close to the public, landlords continue to file eviction cases online so that they can push evictions through as soon as possible. As the crisis continues, tenants will have to continue to fall behind on their rent and accrue debt. What would you do to address this if you were in the council now? I'll let you know when your time starts.
We need to put a moratorium on all evictions and create rent cancellation options for individuals facing financial hardships. D.C. must take action to avoid residents being further displaced during this time period and to having to shoulder most of the burden. The economic burden for this crisis should be carried by developers who received hundreds or millions in taxpayer dollars and the banks who received trillions in federal relief money, not everyday working people. We need to cancel rent and shift the burden for seeking relief to the corporations well-positioned to do that and not make this a burden that tenants and working families have to shoulder at this time.
The D.C. Housing Authority states that 6,600-plus units of public housing need up to $2.5 billion in deferred maintenance and capital improvements. And the agency has charted a 20-year redevelopment plan. What would you like to see happen in public housing and what would you do?
Yeah, public housing has become a huge issue for us here in D.C. as we talk about the quality of public housing in our city and the continuing dwindling of our public housing stock here in the city. For me, what I want to see is, I think what we need to do as a city is to first immediately stop the practice of privatizing public housing stock and instead invest and repair public housing stock so that all units are going to be safe, habitable, and environmentally friendly as well. I think this can be done when we combine our local money with federal funds to make sure we have all the necessary repairs, including making sure that we are redoing our housing with the latest green technologies. I think the district should continue to push resources into our community as well and making sure that families are able to do this. There should be an investment in the building of a publicly-owned and controlled housing option that is deeply affordable to residents at no more than 25% of all incomes. I think in this model, we can see that private developer taking profits from rent payments would not happen. And so as a council member, I am focused on making sure that we continue to produce housing stock and not privatize it, but put it back in the hands of the people and that the government should take the responsibility of making sure that we have this public housing stock in our city and depend on us to be able to do that and not privatizing it any further.
All right, thank you. The next question. From encampment clearings to the threat of COVID outbreaks and shelters, we know that D.C.'s homeless services programs are not working for many residents. How would you ensure that all D.C. residents have safe, quality, and affordable housing? You can start now.
Yeah, we absolutely, when it comes to, we need to look at innovative strategies to combat homelessness. What we've seen is that we need to have both temporary housing and long-term housing available for families. And when we talk about just housing, I'm not talking about just the physical building, but housing that includes resources within it. And so I want to see us do like we've seen in places like Utah, where we create housing. We also have that housing include resources within the building to support when it comes to psychological support. Families that are homeless are facing some other psychological issues that can be of help. Substance abuse counseling and support services, job and education opportunity services, the availability to be able to achieve your GED, to be able to get help with creating resumes and supports with getting jobs. I don't want to just see us create housing units. I want to see us create housing communities for our homeless to solve our chronic homelessness problem in this city. We've already lost too many lives during this COVID crisis to those experiencing chronic homelessness. We need to put our money where our mouth is and make the investment in creating temporary housing and long-term housing for our chronic homeless families and building that trust with those communities by not coming in and doing things like we've seen with the encampment clearings, but building trust and building relationship and offering resources so that those who are experiencing chronic homelessness feel welcome in our community as they are a part of our community and that we're going to do all we can to make sure they are able to transition and live safely and have what they need to be able to do that.
This question will only be a minute. You have a minute to answer it. We've talked about D.C.'s affordable housing crisis with respect to rent control, public housing, and homelessness. What would be your top three priorities related to housing as a council member? Please just list them.
Okay. For me, I want to produce, protect, and preserve our housing. My focus will be on producing housing, especially affordable housing, near areas of transit to support families. When we talk about protecting housing, it will be in strengthening our rent control laws and also our Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act rights. And it would also be in making sure that we're funding our public housing trust fund and making sure that the funds that are part of our public housing trust fund actually make it to those who need it most. And that is housing that can help families who make less than $50,000 a year and those who make above it. And so making sure that we have the funds to support things like our LSRP's, our local supplemental rental programs, and ensuring that funding is there is crucial to me. And investing in programs to support our seniors and those aging in place is going to be of critical concern for me and making sure that we're able to do that.
The impacts of coronavirus have also revealed the lack of real safety net. Sorry. The impacts of coronavirus have also revealed the lack of real safety net for workers in D.C., particularly undocumented workers and those working in the informal gig economy. How would you address those issues? And you have three minutes for this question. Let me just set my timer. And you can start whenever you're ready.
I think most importantly with accountability and resources here in Ward 4 is so important for us. We have one of the largest immigrant communities in our city, both our Latino immigrant community, our Caribbean immigrant community, as well as our African immigrant community, especially Ethiopian and Eritrean. And so here, for me, it's going to be making sure that businesses that profit off the backs of undocumented workers and gig employees have the accountability they need, which we've done at the Attorney General's Office, coming after employers for wage theft, particularly within the gig economies. I would like to explore laws that would change how workers are classified since their work and pay rate can fluctuate based on factors outside of their own control. Supporting things like one fair wage to support families and making sure people can have a one fair wage in this city. I support proposals to extend unemployment insurance to cover undocumented and gig workers along with offering local grants to help provide assistance. During this COVID crisis, I have fought with many allies to make sure that we had a cash assistance fund to be able to support those who don't qualify for unemployment insurance. And I'm going to continue to fight to make sure that we, as a city, will invest in making sure that there's a cash assistance fund for our undocumented workers. When we say this is a sanctuary city, we don't mean just in the fact of being safe and secure in your home, but also being safe and secure and being able to gain financial support and health supports that you need. And so for me, that's how I would address these issues, with accountability, with the investment in resources, and making sure that everyone can survive and have a place here in our city and in Ward 4 particularly.
All right, thank you. And I believe this is our last question. The coronavirus pandemic has brought to the forefront issues of systematic inequalities in D.C. We know that 79% of the COVID-19-related deaths as of 2014 in D.C. were Black residents, who only make up only about 46% of the population. What do you see as some of the underlying factors contributing to these disparities? And how would you like to tackle them?
Absolutely, what we've seen are systematic inequalities happening. Some of the underlying factors include our access to healthcare and the environments in which we live, right? So underlying conditions such as our heart conditions, such as asthma, these are underlying health conditions that have significantly impacted Black and Brown families in our city. We've also seen, also, many of us are frontline workers, right? Our Black and Brown communities also are continuing to work right now through this crisis as essential workers, whether it's grocery store workers, whether it's transit workers, whether it's childcare center workers. We have jobs that cannot be done from home. And so one of the things you see right now is that we have these underlying health conditions that are born out of the areas in which we live in. Some of us, some people have access to healthy foods and there are food deserts in other parts of this city that we have talked about. And so one of the things we want to do is make sure we are addressing, tackling all of these problems. And so what that looks like for me is improving access to healthcare and ending barriers to healthcare, making sure we have a hospital east of the river, but also making sure that we don't have continued barriers to obtain access, like having to come, go down to southeast or go down and to each part of the city to be able to continue those services. What it looks like for me is paying people living wages and making sure that they have the material, the PPE materials they need to be able to serve, whether they're healthcare workers or whether they're transit workers. They deserve protections, they deserve support, and more importantly, they deserve a living wage. And so we talk about having hazard pay during this time. Let's not look at hazard pay just now. Let's talk about how do we increase their wages? Because as we see, they are essential workers and they're keeping us together. What it looks like is addressing the problems we see in environmental issues and the pollution that goes into the water, the lead in the water in public housing units, and addressing those factors and making sure those repairs happen. And those repairs not just happen just because other families are able to afford those front costs, but the city should step in and replacing lead pipes across our city and within our public housing. What it looks like is making sure that in education, our students have the resources that they need and we don't have this digital divide that has been created as a result of this and making sure that people are able to have access to computers and have access to Wi-Fi. And so for me, to address these systematic issues, we're going to have to look in housing, looking at our housing and repairing our housing, population, public housing, in education, in health, in living wages. That's how we tackle these disparities. We have to recognize that all these things are connected. And to solve one of them, we're going to have to boldly and systematically and aggressively tackle. and systematically and aggressively tackle all of them. And so, that means doing things like reclaim rent control, strengthening and protecting our rent control laws and making sure that people are not going to be offended by a lot of the loopholes that have been created and tackle our issues head-on.
Hello, Washington DC and those who are fighters for justice and equality and of course reclaiming rent control herbs. I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to share with you. I'm Perry Redd. I'm candidate for the Ward 4 seat on the DC Council. This is my second run for the council seat. I ran in a special election in 2013 and many of the proposals that I offered to the city, some of those are now law in the city. And I like to think that as a DC Statehood Green candidate, I am outside of the norm, outside of the mainstream, and definitely outside of the establishment. Therefore, getting elected is an uphill battle. But if you want to do something different and get results for your vote, then vote for Perry Redd on June 2nd. I'm looking forward to sharing with you my views on rent and the plight of renters in DC.
Great, thank you. The first question. Approximately 90,000 families live in apartments that are under DC's rent control program, which is currently up for reauthorization. The DC Council's temporary universal ban on all rent increases exposes the need for increased tenant protections. What changes, if any, would you make to DC's rent control laws?
Well, first of all, I believe that rent control needs to be expanded beyond the current 1976 restriction. And that's how I see it, as a restriction. I think rent control should be expanded to new construction right now today. And I'm not talking 2004 and before or 2010 and before. I'm talking about today. The issue is we have one of the most, we live in one of the most expensive cities in the country and we have not allowed wages or job training or job enhancement for workers in DC to grow with the city. And I believe that rent control expansion is number one. I believe total rights are an important part of this puzzle as well. I've seen some of my workers as a workers' rights advocate have to move out of the city because workers were not respected. I have a problem with that. And I don't, I also want to deal with just the fact that renters have to pay into this capital improvements, maintenance deal or at least landlords can assess it. And I think that's unfair and that's something I want to address as a DC council member.
Thank you. The council has enacted legislation that prohibits rent increases during the state of emergency and prohibits evictions until 30 days after the public health crisis has ended. We know that nationally, a third of tenants could not pay their rent on April 1st. And given that over 87,000 DC workers have filed for unemployment in the last month, that statistic may be even higher in the district. While the courts in DC are closed to the public, until recently landlords were continuing to file eviction cases online to push evictions through as soon as possible. As the crisis continues, tenants will continue to fall behind on their rent and accrue debt. What would you do to address this if you were on the council now?
Well, two things in particular. One, a stay on landlord filing. As a workers' rights advocate, I'm having a problem right now in the office of administrative hearings where rulings have been issued while the courts are closed. And so, it is difficult for workers to obtain justice when it's a one-way door and the key is only on one side. So, I would propose a stay on the filing for evictions. But I'd also, I would implement as a DC council member, I propose a six-month stay for tenants to pay their rents. And as far as payment of those back rents would be incrementalized in 10% increments on succeeding after six months, six months beyond the end of the state of emergency declared by the mayor. And that payment to landlords in lieu of that would come out of the DC surplus. We've had surpluses for the last at least five years that have been just tremendous. And we are so proud of our surpluses. But they need to be, these are the times when the surplus needs to be used.
Thank you. The DC Housing Authority states that the 6,600-plus units of public housing need up to $2.5 billion in deferred maintenance and capital improvements. And the agency has charted a 20-year redevelopment plan. What would you like to see happen in public housing and what would you do?
Well, I'd hate to think that the 20-year redevelopment plan is something that's set in stone. But there are a few things in particular. I like to see as the housing stock is being revamped or improved. I like to see a right of return as part of our public policy. I believe it needs, this problem with our public housing, it needs a legislative fix and a bold one. So, a right of return provision that allows the tenants who are moved out when these units are redone, they need to have in concrete their right to return to their housing. No more of this replacing unit for unit. It needs to be replacing human for human. In other words, where they say, well, we'll replace 20 units with 20 other units. Oh yeah, that sounds fair on its face. But 22 bedrooms for 21 bedrooms is a no-go. And I, as a council member, would stand firm even if I stand alone. And that makes, just like, I'm an ANC commissioner. And there, when it comes to developers, I vote no on just about every developer that comes in for us. And I say that not in pride, but in principle, that you must tend to the needs of the residents of this city. And so, I'm big on that. And then, I believe in historical respect as well. And so, those who have been in these housing units, affordable housing units for decades, they need to be respected as a part of this city. These people have invested their lives, livelihoods, and some their blood in this city. And I believe in historical respect as well for the people already here.
Thank you. From encampment clearings to the threat of COVID outbreaks in shelters, we know that DC's homeless services programs are not working for many residents. How would you ensure that all DC residents have safe, quality, and affordable housing?
Well, I really don't like the haphazard nature, methodology behind removing these encampments. And it's a damn shame that we even have encampments. There is a solution though, but it's going to take a legislative one. It's going to take a bold one. It's going to take one from a state, from a position of courage. I would recommend that our council and I propose that we follow the shelter-first approach. And that's what I call it, shelter-first. But I follow Seattle's model where those who don't have housing, those who are on the street documented, and I don't care if it's one year. Well, actually, one year is not enough. If you've been on the street two years, you've been on the street six months. Housing first as a human right is where I stand. It's in my platform. And so, I believe that every person who's living under, because there's always room under the bridge. And I know, I've been this close to living there. Here's the deal. Every human being needs shelter and shelter first.
Thank you. So, this is the one-minute question. We've now talked about DC's affordable housing crisis with respect to rent control, public housing, and homelessness. What would be your top three priorities related to housing as a council member? You can list them.
Top three priorities. When it comes to housing, it looks like this. One, housing is a human right. And I mentioned my platform policy position, which I entitled "shelter first." So, anyone who is homeless, we need to find permanent housing and afford them permanent housing. There are so many if unison city. So, one is that. Two, I'd like to restructure a housing production trust fund, which has been a sham to me. And I say it loud and clear because we effectively still have people living in shelters right down the street from me, two blocks is a family shelter. And those folks, you know, they're sitting out on the street every day and then they go into the shelter at night when there's housing stock available. And for me, I believe inclusionary zoning should be expanded from 10% or eight to 10, whatever, fuzzy number, to 14%.
Great, thank you. The impacts of coronavirus have also revealed the lack of a real safety net for workers in DC, particularly undocumented workers and those working in the informal and gig economies. How would you address these issues?
Well, I believe that these workers, gig workers, of which I am now one, ironically, should be brought in from shadows. Gig workers need the same respect. They need the, I am of the mind that the definition of independent contractor is allowed to go willy-nilly in the city. And the Fair Labor Standards Act makes it clear what an independent worker is as opposed to an employee. I believe that our gig workers, quote-unquote, those that work for Uber and Lyft and these car sharers, they should be employees and not independent contractors. And I would fight for that as a council member. Those immigrant workers, yes, need to be brought in from the shadows. And we have some of the most liberal laws on immigrant workers. We need, or immigrants period, we need to bring them into our mainstream worker protection laws in the strengthening of the Wage Debt Prevention Act. I'm huge on that. That's my number one deal as executive director of a nonprofit here in DC.
Thank you. And the last question. The coronavirus pandemic has brought to the forefront issues of systemic inequalities in DC. We know that 79% of the COVID-19-related deaths in DC were Black residents and only make up about 46% of the population. What do you see as some of the underlying factors contributing to these disparities? And what would you do to tackle them?
How long do I have for this? Listen, the failures of systemic inequalities in America are mirrored right here in DC. And I grew up, I was born and raised in the city. I mean, I was born in southwest, reared in southeast, raised in northeast. I live in northwest. Inequalities still persist. So, it's sad, the mirrors American snapshot. Here's the first thing, education. The first plank in my platform is childcare for all. Every child in this city should be afforded childcare. Parents should be able to pay for it without going broke, without taking out of their rent. It's hard to pay rent when you got to pay childcare. I'm big on that and let it be known that my opponents are not. Secondly, I want to end on education and end to the unconstitutional two-headed school system, charters and traditional public schools. The 1954 Supreme Court decision of Brown versus Boyd said that separate can never be equal. And that's exactly what we got. In respect to teachers or disrespect to teachers, unionizing, whatever the case may be, it's unfair. I would fight to end. Third thing in particular is judicial negligence. We are not supporting, let me move, my second piece, first piece, early education or education. Second piece, the workplace. The workplace, enforce the Wage Debt Prevention Act. Workplace unions need to be respected in the city, especially the teachers' union. The third thing, I would say conservative judges in DC and the way that we run our judicial leanings in the office of administrative hearings or in the agencies that exact decisions like the Human Rights Commission. We have gotten away from humans being treated with respect when it comes to these decisions. I know, I advocate for workers. That is what I do for a living. I don't get paid anything for it, but I do it because I believe in it. So, education, number one, systemic inequality. Of course, wealth inequality is among the greatest. But the workplace and execution of our anti-discrimination laws.